It's ridiculous. He's over there saying.
Thank you.
Wait till you tell me to go to my room next. Or if you have to tell me one more time.
Don't make me stop this meeting.
Click your heels when you address her.
You couldn't hear my voice, but you sure heard it.
John, here's some flashbacks there.
Only they used your real name. Douglas what?
It's Charles Douglas.
Charles Douglas. Charles Douglas, get over there.
Anytime I heard Douglas.
This sounds like Fairbanks to me.
Okay, I believe this is time to turn it over to Mr. Bloom.
Okay, Stephen Bloom, Severn Trent. Before we get into the budget itself, Chris had mentioned kind of a timeline. So I wanted to start with that, just to kind of make sure we're all on the same page. As you can see highlighted in yellow, that's our task for today. Regardless of how much detail, we can spend as much detail or as little detail on the budget as you like. But at the end of the day, we have to set the high watermark for assessments. And we have to set a public hearing. Those two tasks have to be accomplished today.
Is this just the general fund budget?
All assessments. So that would be...
Well, we don't have an enterprise assessment.
Right, so all the general funds within that. So I, general fund by itself, Pelican Preserve, Stony Brook, and Town Center.
Okay, okay.
Oh, and your debt service, because they have assessments as well. Which would include your lake bank restoration. Again, you have to set that assessment as well.
Okay.
Then I just put into this timeline, because last year what we did is we split out the budget from there into little bits and pieces at subsequent meetings to kind of talk about the different pieces. So I put together a schedule that's just kind of looking at the calendar itself. With the end game being the public hearing on August 17th. And then obviously at the public hearing, that would be the board's final opportunity to address the budget, at least during this process. Not excluding future amendments. But those would kind of be, if you look at it, basically first week in July would be looking at your general funds. Then you, I put in there for the 20th, the enterprise fund. And then August 3rd, take a look at your capital projects. Doesn't have to be in that order. You know, it just kind of, I wanted to put something together for you guys to consider.
Do we ask questions as you go along?
Sure, if you want it, about the timeline.
So, I'd say something to you in the break. The operation and maintenance costs, repair and replacements related costs, the capital reserve related costs to our enterprise fund. Those then really wouldn't be for a discussion at this time, because those are not per assessment.
They wouldn't be necessary at this time, but it doesn't mean statements or questions or, you know, please take a look at this for the...
But storm sewer would, because it's under general fund.
Correct.
And ponds?
Ponds would, yes.
Okay.
And Chris, we've had discussions about this, and I've had discussions with April as well. Yeah, I'd really like to try to look at this budget and tie it back to the departments, to what the needs are. So we can just look at budgeting a little bit differently as we move forward. So we can really see where we're favorable. And to be honest, to give Chris and staff the ability to manage and work within their budgets to help them do their job, so we can get out of the weeds a little bit. Chris, is there anything that you want to say going into this, as far as your philosophy during this budgeting process? Anything that you, you know, you've had conversations about, or anything that we need to know going into it? So we can make sure our philosophy is maybe aligning with yours?
We're trying to put together more line item information for a couple reasons. Instead of just grouping stuff into a large category, say, repair and maintenance. Break that out more, and we do that more in the workshop setting. Wanted to show you where our priorities are with this line item. Also, if you want to cut something, instead of saying, "Take $10,000 out," and look at it a little closer, and see if this doesn't align with our priorities. And I hope in that workshop on the 30th of June, Mr. Deserbo, that that will push some of that alignment with the budget numbers. You know, your priorities, so they fall in line.
Chris, I sent out an email to everybody, both to the board, this is a pain in the neck, the way this works. Enumerating what I estimate to be the phase, and I didn't get a response back from anybody, so it must have been just so well-written. Indicating what the phase two, I'm sorry, the remainder eight ponds of phase one were going to cost. And I indicated that it would be about 2.7 million more than the 1.6 million available. So that means we're at about 4.3 million to be able to take the bond, I guess, easier way to say it is to take the bond up to about seven and a half, eight million. We're going to need to go that high. Are you saying, Stephen, that we have to take, if it does have to go to eight million, that that 2 million 20-year calculation is the assessment that we have to add in right now?
That's what's in the package you have in front of you, an $8 million loan.
It's already included in the number.
So you already took it?
Yes.
Thank you.
With the idea being it's easier to take it down.
Yeah, it's always easier to go down.
And I would also go on this, you know, Stephen, that we, in working with Chris and staff, I mean, there's some significant things that we're going to continue to have to address in the short term. Irrigation infrastructure, there's some other things. And I would like to get to a point where, well, we do have a three-year plan, and we have an approved budget for the next year. And if it is not on that plan, we either have to make it, well, one, we ask the question, is it on the plan? Is it funded? If so, okay, we continue to move forward. If it's not on the plan, is it a priority? And if it is, where are we going to get the funding from? We're going to have to cut things, instead of continue to add. And I think we all want to be physically responsible. But we also, I believe, I'm going to speak for the majority, that there are things that we need to get done.
Absolutely.
And we do not want to continue to kick can down the road. But we don't want the increased assessments to be the only way that we're going to fund these projects. So that's more of a philosophical approach from the board, and we'll talk more about this in the advance. But when we go into this, I just want to make sure we're all kind of moving to the same drum.
The only problem I've got is if it ain't an assessment, you're going to go to Vegas and roll the dice? Where's the money coming from? There's nothing else.
Well, that's where...
It's only an assessment.
Well, no, there's not. I mean, there's water and sewage, I mean, there's revenue, there's other areas. I'm just saying, what I'm not saying is we don't, we're at a zero increase assessment. But I'm saying, we have to be very smart. And I think we all understand that, right?
I understand it, but my point was, is that other than assessments, there is nothing else to pay for this stuff.
There's revenue.
That's what an assessment is.
No, I'm telling you that...
You talking about the enterprise fund? See, I'm talking storm sewer, good example. There's, other than an assessment on the non-advalorem, there isn't any other way to collect that money. There ain't any other. There ain't anything else. We don't have, we don't, well, unless we create a stormwater utility. What are you doing, Tony? Stormwater utility?
You don't want to know.
A stormwater utility, a stormwater utility where you would make it a, basically an enterprise fund. Otherwise, it's just like anything else, a park, or roads, or landscaping. It purely is generated money to pay for it with an assessment. That's it. We don't have anything else.
And I think part of the issue that this board is facing is the realization that enough things have been kicked down the road, that they're kind of now speed bumps, and we're stuck trying to climb over them.
Well, some of the things that Kathy has said in the past, I totally agree. I don't have that optimism. It would be grants, that we could go after some grants. But our median household income and all that other stuff, I think that we have a snowball's chance of you-know-where of getting grants. But other than that, assessment's the only thing we got available to us.
We can get a million dollars from the dog park revenue.
Where's the other 995 going?
That brings up a good point. You know, when you look at a stormwater utility and dedicated funding, and also on the utility side, is your utility operation that does water, sewer, and irrigation responsible for the distribution of the irrigation water the way they are for the distribution of water and collection of wastewater? That's one idea you could look at. If you're charging to supply this irrigation water and you're selling it, should the utility costs or those rates include a capital component for retrofit those main irrigation lines on the board?
I totally agree with that. But that, but that's why I brought up earlier. Since it's associated with our enterprise fund, that's not something that we're talking about right now. That's more a rates and charges deal on the enterprise, not an assessment.
Right. Then you wouldn't be setting aside that general fund money for design and construction.
True, true, just move it. Yeah, okay.
Those costs.
And we put out a couple of things in the capital budget that you haven't seen before, like replacing fire hydrants. You know, a lot of them are 25 years old. You can't get parts for those old units now. And if you go in to pop a new hydrant in the ground, you better have $4,500 in your pocket.
But again, those aren't assessment-related, that's enterprise fund-related, but it's got to be done. The other one I have is that salaries are all of our salaries that we currently have, that we're currently paying in the budget, and do we have an increase predicted for next year that is in here also?
Are you talking about net new FTE headcount?
Our additional salary, whatever it is, 200,000, 500,000, whatever it is, is the number that's in here representative of what we're currently incurring, paying on them every two weeks or whatever we pay basis, and does it have a provision for an increase? 2%, 3%, whatever.
And one thing on that is, I think the sheet that you have doesn't include the latest increase that was retroactive. So about four or five of those positions were bumped up a little bit.
Is that in this budget, is my question?
No.
So we need that in it, plus we need 3% to bump it for next year.
The 3% is in there.
But you have the 3% on X, not 122X, or whatever.
I'll have to get those retro positions in there.
Okay, so then we need to bump it a little bit to account for that. But it does have the 3%, or what, is that what you use, 3%?
I use 3%.
So if it has 3%, the only thing we have to make sure is, is it's 3% of the current paid number.
And were you also asking for any projection of net new headcount for next year?
Thank you, yes. To make sure it has that, because we know we have a replacement for April. And I don't know what Kenny and Mike and you have come up with on any other staffing that has to be thrown in there.
Well, if you want...
That again are assessment-related.
Sure.
Because see, some of them could be going into utilities, which would not come into this deal.
Right. Well, let me mention one thing, and then to answer that question. In the budget memo, I did kind of go through each of the major sections, including staffing, to let you know about new positions and stuff. So we can kind of go through that if you want. First thing I wanted to mention, just from a mechanical standpoint, Chris and his staff did a very good job of getting us their initial feedback on this budget. So it does have the first pass of staff's feedback in terms of staffing, capital projects. Some of the repair and maintenance lines have changed. And as Chris mentioned, they went in and did a little more detail on repairs and maintenance. So we do have some of that already in there. Again, before, as we go through some of these discussions, as well as the meeting on the 30th, things will change. And, you know, we can make those adjustments. But there are some in there already, in terms of what the staff is looking for, for their, you know, for their priorities.
Is, when you've got the board approves the tentative budget, is this the budget, whatever we approve tonight, is this the budget that goes to Lee County?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. And so my question is, what, I'm sorry, Tony.
No, sorry, and to the city.
My question is, if the raises that we'd already given to staff are not included in here, this is already putting us at a place where we're going to have to pull money out of the budget someplace else?
Yeah.
You're talking about for 2017, not alone 2018? We're not, we don't have it in the current 2017 budget, I'm guessing? The increases?
I think we did, yeah.
How could they be in there and not in here?
Well, the issue, well, what happened, they weren't done until March or April? I think, and that's what it was.
So they're not in the 2017 budget?
Yeah. In terms of the impact on what we're talking about today, it's not going to be significant. I'll be able to find a place to pull it from. And the reason why I say that is, right now, the way this is set up, the total wage increase for the general fund is about $1,500. Because it's, you know, that's just what the 3% equals. So even if I'm adding another 25, $5,000, I don't think it's going to cause a significant issue.
The wage increase is only $1,500?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one.
Something, that, no way.
Let me switch over.
That math, I don't think is correct. On page two, it says $18,000.
It's...
No, it's on that, $63,000.
I'm only focusing so much on the general fund, because I can change the enterprise fund whenever. And that's the biggest piece of it, is basically 12%, of your entire payroll is general fund. So like I said...
So it's a percentage of a percentage.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't...
Then we're talking about a $2.5 million general fund budget.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't messing up on that.
Yeah, no. I'll make that adjustment for it, but I don't feel that you have to... I mean, again, what you could say is, increase the assessments by whatever it takes to fund that. But I don't want to muddy the water anymore than...
We don't think we need to do that, okay.
I'll get those adjusted and get them in there so that they are shown properly, but...
Just to recap, what is the EAU budget, general fund, right now? Is it that 370, no, 438.11? 438.11?
438.11 is last year's?
Yeah, that's what I meant. Page three.
If you look on page three of the memo...
Yeah, those are all, that one column, 2017, those are the numbers that we're talking about adjusting, correct?
Correct. Column to the left of it, fiscal year 18, is what you're going to be looking to approve today.
So you're, what is, let's see, 517 from 438, so that's about a, what, 62?
Eighty bucks.
Eighty bucks? And the percentages, okay. It's on there, sorry, I see it. Okay.
But remember, that includes the lake bank restoration.
Well, that's $20, Margaret, is what it works out to be, of that.
Just though the $80 does include that. Go ahead, Mrs. Bloom.
I want to question the 3% increase in the salary. I questioned this last year as a resident. The increase, the cost of living increase last year was 0.03%, and the year before was 0%. Therefore, I would like to decrease that increase to 2% at least, because we don't know what the cost of living is this year. But the cost of living for past two years, when they got the 3%, was a lot lower than 3%.
We can always cut it later. We just have to have a high number now. If we would change and decide to want to go to 3, and we do 2, we wouldn't be able to do it.
And he gave the 3% across the board, which the board's already said that the raises are depending on merit. So like last time, you don't see it?
Not cost of living. These are on colas, these are merit.
But I still think it should be 2%. And since we have to vote on it today, that means we're voting on the 3%, even though you said we can lower it to 2. I'm confused. If we're voting 3%...
No, it's the max today.
This is...
Just the max.
What we're voting on is the most that the budget's going to be, all the way across the board.
Two and a half, $2.5 million for the general fund.
Well, I have a lot.
We could, we could, we could just as easily, after today, approve it at the 3% and then take it to 0. But you just can't go the other way.
We also have, yeah, we're considering employee contribution on the health insurance side, but we haven't figured into that.
And we're also wanting to add additional employees, so we need to consider those things. But what we're doing is hitting a high, we're setting a high mark. That we're telling the residents, we are not, your assessment is not going to go up more than this. It could very easily go down as we work through the budget, because this is our first swipe through the budget. But it won't be more than this. That's what we're saying.
This is very high. I figured this out. A person can buy 36.1 gallons of gas, so they can get to work. Because these are working people. They can buy, I forgot how many, 53 loaves of bread. These are important, those are things that normal people need, and we're looking at raising it. And this is, last time, we raised it $60 last year, and that was supposed to include the pond restoration. And now we have it, all the raise up, in our case, it's almost 90. But it's up to $80, and that seems to be a lot, a big increase. We, you know, there was complaints last year about the 60, and now we're up to 80. So we really need to look at this. I mean, people who are working, I mean, that's a lot of money for them.
And I do, I appreciate what you're saying, and I understand it. And it also comes back to all of the projects and all the infrastructure that we've got failing, that these cans have been kicked down the road. And unfortunately, this board is saddled with the difficult decision of saying, "We can't kick it down the road anymore. We've got to take care of this stuff."
And maybe we don't need to add another employee. I'm just making suggestions here. We have to look at it in the wide thing. And I'm sorry, Mr. Bloom.
Stephen, in your, I didn't see the, we jumped to the OO2 fund, is that the first one that you're doing?
That's only because, I printed those out because there was a last-minute change to it.
Just two things under PP, and I'm assuming that they had all their input into this. But they've increased their aquatic contractual deal from 146 to 204. Did you do something similar to ours, because we're going to have the same thing on ours? It's going to be increasing significantly with the additional work that the aquatic contractors are going to have to be doing. And then I also saw the one down that they put in, Downspout Initiative. I'm assuming that's one that their ponds group and your group guys did that? That's your budgetary number? Okay.
Yeah, they have signed off on, all the different pieces signed off on this budget.
We haven't made a decision here of that Downspout Initiative here in Gateway on our side. But we certainly have the issue of the lake maintenance contract that's got to go up. We're not doing all the work that needs to be done. Is Pelican, can we just indicate that right now, or is somebody going to say something that Pelican's acceptable with what they got here? You're good?
Yeah.
So then we skip that one then. I think the question is, is Chris, are you and Mike and Kenny in a position to where you've looked at this on the areas one and two? And these increases of essentially 79.63 pretty much put us in a position that we are high enough that we're covering everything, that we won't want to add it later, and only to find out it's too late? Are you good with this number right now for starting purposes?
Yes, and there's some priorities that we put in there that the board might not so much prioritize. But, you know, capital, swimming pool, you know, we have $100,000 in there to retrofit the bathrooms, et cetera. It may only take $75,000, $78,000 in that area.
Well, to me, your job is to tell us what you think you need. And that's what I'm asking, do you feel that this is what you feel we need? Now, we can always come back and cut and hack and kibitz on it. But is this the budget you feel you need to do this correctly? Run this place correctly?
I would say yes. And I think with the board looking at it and some priorities, they're just going to be trimming in some areas and maybe bringing up some other areas. But I would have a hard time justifying a higher amount, especially in a one-year assessment. You just, there's only so much you can do in one year, so much you can go up.
I mean, the one area I keep pushing back on is your staff size. I think we've been operating probably 30, if not 40%, understaffed in previous years. I mean, even with the reorganization, bringing the business manager in, not having Severn Trent, there's areas that we have gaps, which is, you know, I can't speak for Public Works and Utilities, but I would say that there's probably at least one FTE in each one of your groups right now. There's, we don't have human resource support. IT is, we're outsourcing, I mean, there's some infrastructure components to having the, an adequate staff. And I think we've been paying the cost for that over the years. So that's where I really push to you, because if you've got, if you've got an experienced team that is, that is balanced accordingly, it will make your job a lot easier, and it'll save us a lot of money if we've got such-and-matter experts in the right areas. So I'm just going to throw that out. I really want to push you on the headcount piece. Because this has six additional headcount, with really only three are net new. And I don't even know what those three net new are. I don't know if it's, it wasn't really weird.
I figured we'd get into that later with the details.
And we made some internal changes also. The parks and rec person we had that supervised, who's not with us any longer, a lot of those administrative tasks are going to Mike. And I'm basically taking that position and moving it into utilities. And of course, the utilities was paying 60% of that FTE anyway. But that'll, that'll bring us up and be a big help, you know, that extra person on call. And we're looking for, you know, licensed person to come in here.
Yeah, just really the administrative side is, I think, where...
Mr. Guy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Stephen, on the memo that you just prepared for us, on page three, we have the chart with the EAU's assessment, so what the chart was just on the screen. And then on page, it's labeled four, but it's really the last page in here. There's another one, and I've been flipping back and forth. And I can't tell any difference between...
I think this third page got flipped twice. I was rushing to go there.
Which one you want, Bill?
The second memo I handed out.
The memo we just handed out.
Oh, there's a duplication.
There's no difference.
There's no difference.
Okay. That'll save me some time. Trying to find, find the difference in all those numbers. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Any other questions for Stephen? With the idea that we're, tonight, the only thing we're doing is setting our public hearing date and setting our high watermark for what the potential increase in assessments could be. As far as line item?
Maximum.
We're not doing line item vetoes.
No, oh, no, be here all night.
That's getting him...
That's not part of the budget tonight. That's not...
Are you looking for...
Because we've asked staff to do a good job to set this budget, and I think they have. So yes, I'm looking for...
You're looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'm looking for my calendar here, all right.
Which table are you going with, Stephen, that you want to make reference to on the motion?
Yeah, it's...
The one on page three?
Page three of the memo.
Okay.
And if you can just include the Pelican Preserve changes that were attached as well as part of that, just sort of, it's very clear that what we send to the county and city.
I would make the motion that the fiscal year 2018 preliminary budget dated June 14th is prepared by Severn Trent, inclusive of the Pelican Preserve, be approved in the maximum amount as shown in the table on page three. And that we set a public hearing on August...
17th.
Thank you, August 17th, 2017.
Do you want to, last year, we set a specific time for the budget part, just as a point of reference.
Did we do it a little bit later, like, so the people, 5:00?
Yes, we did. We started it at 5:00.
I just want to include that in the motion.
I'd include that in the motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
What if we vote no? Because I still think it's much too high.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Four to one.
Okay, and there is a resolution 2017-17 in your package as well. It kind of formalizes that on the same lines.
Does anybody got a number of what page that's on?
Is that in the memo?
Page 154.
Is it in the hard copy?
It's in the original agenda book.
Okay, I didn't get there.
I'm sorry, what page number?
Yeah.
154.
Can you put that on the, oh, that's that one, it was the very last page?
Yeah.
Yeah. You want a motion to approve that?
Adopt that resolution.
Resolution, or adopt that resolution, 2017-17?
As amended, because it has 3:00 PM.
Yeah, it's 3:00 PM.
Oh, to 5:00 PM, yeah.
Wouldn't that have been just inclusive in the motion I already made? It's kind of duplicative.
I thought you did all that.
Yeah, I thought I kind of did all that. Yeah, play it safe. Make a motion that we approve resolution 2017-17. Make a motion that we approve resolution 2017-17, as shown on page 154 of the board book with the change at 5:00 o'clock instead of 3:00 o'clock.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Stephen.
This was awful smooth. Now, the hard part's coming, but.
The hard part's coming, that's correct.
I think, Chris, you guys and Steve.
You used to go home before we got to the hard part.
You guys, I was really expecting this to be leaving a little bit to be desired, so it looks like you guys have really been doing a lot of work putting this together, so very appreciative of it.
I think they did. Really, this is a good job.
Hey, nice job, Chris. Stephen gets the credit.
And some of this will probably come out in our board advance, and as, and they're talking about priorities.
We've got to go through priority and.
All right, that leaves us two supervisor comments. I'll start with Mrs. Flaherty.
I don't have any to make.
Mr. Guy.
Nothing further, thank you, Madam Chairman.
I have nothing. Mr. Banks?
Nothing for me.
Why is it always a me?
And Mr. Tinkell, can we, can we leave it at?
It's going to be, it's going to be fast.
Can we leave it at 3?
It's going to be, no. No, you're limiting.
Three pages or three?
Three minutes per. I go through these very fast. Are we, Mike, getting the meeting with Bentley Set, Bentley Electric on the soccer lighting? Can we get that going as soon as possible?
Yes.
Because we're going to need that for discussion. Talked about it earlier, Ford to Line meeting, guess we're waiting on that. We already talked about the Lee County meeting. The, God, it's bad, we can't read your, oh, the Linear Park, it's bad, we can't read your own writing. Timberwood, I was not aware Timberwood Preserve, we had accepted those two ponds that we're setting over here. There's another one that was September 1 of last year, we accepted those ponds, and they're going to have, they're going to have to have work done of them.